That's several months ago.
Well, enjoy. We need some photos to be nice.
Will do. Okay, good evening, everybody. We are at 3.1 recombinating open session. We are recombinating open session at 5:51 PM. By law and court policy, in the state of the body, it is being administered. By law and court policy, any member of the public may address the board on an item on the agenda or any non-agenda items, but the public must present a written request to the board. Therefore, I ask you to kindly submit your speakers' slips at this time to help us run the definition meeting. Speakers' slips for non-agenda items to be determined in prayer on 4.2. Here, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items will be recognized and called to the podium at that time. You have three minutes to address the governing board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speakers' slips will need to be turned in by 5.7. Hearing of the public regarding agenda items will be recognized and called to the podium when your request to agenda item comes up. You have three minutes to address the governing board. 3.2, reported action taken in closed session. The governing board then in closed session and reported the following action taken. The governing board has determined that the goal progress as required by employment agreements for the superintendent and assistant superintendents has been met as specified in the employment agreement for approved performance compensation for superintendent Honner Clark and assistant superintendent Supersal Hanti, Shelley Pearson, and Ryan Stanley. Items 2.1 to 2.4 and a 4-0 vote. Item 3.3 is question allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
4.4, approval of the agenda. Education, agenda two. Yes, for agenda item 9.2, I request that we change the agenda from board action to board information. Same language for the rest of the agenda. Okay, thank you. Is our motion to approve the agenda?
So move to paper.
You all favor. I oppose. The agenda with the amendment is approved. Okay. Item 4.1 correspondence. Yes, that may need my opinion at work. Superintendents' offices received the correspondence, following correspondence for this month. The MEST Health Safety Plan Protocols Guidelines and Practices, Board meetings, Delmar Hills Modernization Project, Delmar High School Rebuild Project, and Initiative for the Experience for Students this year at DMNT. That completes the correspondence for this month. Okay, 4.2 is hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers? We'll now call members of public who have requested to address the governing board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of public who would like to address the governing board regarding a non-agenda? Regarding a non-agenda item, does complete and submit a speaker's slip at this time. So we have two comments in queue. We had Gina Vargas and Janice. Hello. Hello. Sorry. Hello. Hi.
One more time.
No more time. There we go. Okay.
I can talk about an item that was brought up in the last board meeting that I'll make a number. And I think they started a great job of bringing in certain industry perspectives, but I thought we'd ask the parent teacher about what we do in those first six weeks. So I did bring some assessments that we do. So if you have a copy of those, you can see, I gave those to Megan. You don't need to look at them right now, but just for reference to know what kind of assessment we are giving during those weeks. Teachers and grades first through six have background on their students when they get their class list. They can come and talk to a previous year's teacher. They can look at a Q and file. They can look at a report card. However, under our teachers, we have the best job in the world when we don't know our hands. So they come to us and we have a class list. We have neighbors and siblings we may not know. Just know the name of the child. We don't have information from preschool. And every child comes as a close link. So having time to do assessments in the beginning of the year is invaluable. Because what we're doing as we assess is planning and looking at what these kids are coming to us with their background knowledge. And then we take the curriculum that we're given and we differentiate to teach kids where they come to us at. So we're not just taking our curriculum and teaching it, you know, page by page. We're really looking at crafting what our class needs and what each child needs and helping them not do things that they've already done before, but really expand their learning. We need those weeks. The first week is all logistical. How to unpack your backpack, where the bathrooms are, how to find your lunchbox if someone else's looks like yours. It's snack time instead of lunchtime. The big playground, packing up your backpack, how to find your parents at the end of the day. That first week is really a lot of learning for those kids. Imagine coming somewhere and having someone talk to you all day long about what you need to do. So it's very tiring for them. The second week, we do start assessments and we do two assessments per day, 45 minutes per child. We can get those done in the second to fifth week. But we always have some children who can't come at the time that we would allow them to come. We need to be pretty flexible. That sixth week gives us time for kids to maybe miss their assessment time and sit or even to reschedule. And then we do have one day a week for the teachers to prep. So we're given really a great opportunity to differentiate curriculum, to really personalize it. And that's what makes Delmar so wonderful and that's what makes D.C. Parkings such a joy. And I do thank the district for acknowledging that. And I did just want to give a little background about why we have those weeks. So thank you so much for inviting.
Thank you very much. Yes, I am speaking and asking questions tonight is the board of parents who has granted her many comments at any Delmar Union School Rebuilding because of the restraining order filed against her. First, I would like to know if you, the governing board, approved using taxpayer dollars to have Daniel Shunus Law Firm requesting hearing claiming that Natalie is a vexatious lady because she filed multiple pleadings in direct response to and also related to the restraining orders of D.C. U.S.D. and Ashley Falls teacher Caitlin Fowler McKnight filed against her. This hearing has been continued until July 27. And also, I'd like to know if you, the governing board, approved using taxpayer dollars to have Daniel Shunus Law Firm requested hearing claiming that Natalie had violated the restraining order, which included Ashley Falls principal Harley Pecorella claiming the violations were lawful, purposeful, and frightening, even though according to Google Maps, Natalie dropped off her son over 500 yards further away from the school than she had to to be in compliance with the restraining order. This hearing was rescheduled to July 27. And before committing to spending a large amount of taxpayer dollars to retain Daniel Shunus Law Firm to pursue restraining orders against a D.M.U.S.D. parent, I would like to know, did you, the governing board, investigate Ashley Falls teacher Caitlin Fowler McKnight's and administrators Jenny Huzz and Nadine Shuckett's allegations or conduct any kind of risk assessment? Because forensic scientist Kimberly Garnier's declaration included, surely if the Delmar Union School District is sincerely concerned about acts of violence on their campus, they would conduct a risk assessment to inform their next steps and properly protect their school sites, students, and staff. And there is simply no indication that she, Natalie, has taken steps on the pathway intended violence. And if there is no foundation for genuine fear and no risk of violence, it could only be concluded that the restraining order is sought to silence parents who are exercising their First Amendment claims. Thank you for letting me speak. Okay, thank you. We are at 4.1, sorry, 5.1, for the board governing board first. I'm going to start with Catherine.
No, I have nothing to report. Good evening, everybody.
Um, yes. Well, it's nice to know that we sent our sixth graders on to middle school well-prepared for what's ahead of them. And I was once again a vogue, I guess. Chairperson of the North City West Department of Defense. And as we talked about in the past, that has reaped some nice rewards for the district and for other districts as well. So I'll remain on that, cheering that board for those here.
Good evening, everyone. I don't really have anything to add. It's just that I think I did this month, I did the sixth grade motion and similar rich. I really enjoyed those days. It's really fun to be able to see all the kids excited and the parents excited for the kids looking real sharp. So that's really fun. One of my favorite experiences of the new school. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And I have nothing to report. Item 5.2 is the board of support agenda.
Good evening. We have, as we look at June, it officially marks school is out, which is great. Thank you to board members and everybody for attending sixth grade motions. It's been exciting to see all of the successes of the year. It's been a great year. And, you know, we've continued in our schools to, you know, just do incredible things, transforming learning and the amounts of meaningful learning and connections to real-world experiences and high levels of thinking. Conceptual understanding for our children continues to just impress. And the talent of our teachers and the, you know, world-class way we go about professional learning and how it's, you know, got different levels of entry for new teachers and experienced teachers. And it's been wonderful to see that as well. In addition to our attention to what our children need regarding social and emotional wellbeing and realizing that this year, when we think about the year, it started out with, you know, we're still very much visibly in a pandemic. And by all of the protocols in place, all of the things in place, all of the cohorts and all of those things. And as we gradually moved through the year, we're able to make changes that were good for kids and working with our teachers. It's been great to see the year evolve. So we turned that, you know, into a wonderful closure on the school year. And in addition to all of that, we had some great successes financially. So that was great to see such strong fiscal health as a district and of course AAA rating for Moody's, highest rating we can get and looking good as we move into the future. We also have done a lot of work already with strategic planning, although the bulk of that happens in the fall as we near the end of, you know, 2022 and go through the next month. It's been really exciting to get so much feedback and involvement from people already through our LCAP survey and through all the focus groups that we've done and surveys of our teams and, you know, meeting with professional relations teams and all of our student focus groups and parent teams with team classification and our D-LAC and our E-LAC and all of those things have been great. So when we look at the process, we're excited to be able to talk more about that as we move into the new school year. Some of the data that we have received has been interesting to see what some of the themes were. So I'll share a couple of those when we think about all of the central themes that we got. One was, you know, we surveyed our parents for the LCAP. What their number one priority was actually to focus on the continued expertise of our teachers and the professional learning highly valued by all of our parents. Another one was high-quality student plus program. So that was came out as a definite theme. And then communication and involvement came out. So how do we involve people on an ongoing basis as well as we move into strategic planning through, you know, digital audience interaction? You have a lot of ways to think about getting input from people in various ways, surveys, focus groups, and all of those things. So putting a lot of thought into that and look forward to coming back to the board with more about that. So we're excited about all of the promises we've made and coming back in the new school year as we look to the fall. So that is a little bit of a wrap-up as we look at June. And now I'm excited because it's part of my support test report to get to introduce you again to Ryan Stanley, our assistant superintendent of human resources, who is going to introduce two new members of our leadership team who are with us tonight. We have Maria Parker and Sam Benbeck. So Ryan, thank you for introducing them to us and we're excited to meet them.
Good evening, President Helper, members of the board, Dr. Murray Gattner. So yes, as Holly accurately said, this is my pleasure to be able to introduce two members of our leadership team to you. So first of all, I'd like to invite Ms. Maria Parker. We are thrilled to be able to have Maria, I like to say, coming home to us, back into Delmar. So Maria, prior to her time here was the vice principal in CNT. Before that, Maria was a teacher, leader, a teacher and a leader through the Delmar where she led professional learning around the essential instructions. She was critical in helping the district to perform and have a big voice as hard as we're going to be doing towards district design. So her leadership has been exceptional during her time here. We know that. But Maria coming back now to the meeting, the students, the staff, you can meet her in Sage Canyon to have someone who knows our staff, knows our students, knows our community. And she's going to be doing amazing jobs. We're so excited to have Maria as the principal of Sage Canyon.
Well, thank you so much and I am thrilled to be returning to Delmar to serve the community over at Sage Canyon. I know that this district does remarkable things for kids. I know I loved all the professional learning I got to experience and be a part of leading as a teacher in the district. I just know that there are amazing things that happen here. And I cannot wait to meet the students, the families, and the community staff over at Sage Canyon. And thank you so much for the opportunity to return to Delmar.
And next, I'd like to invite up Seema. So we're thrilled to share that. So thrilled to share that Sam has been selected as our district's new chief technology officer. So Sam comes to us from Westminster where he served for eight years as their district's director of information technology. And Sam is amazing because he comes to us with a background in not only leading technology within his district, but he also comes to us where he was in the Stormy Bob, our curriculum and a technology teacher and an educational technology coach. And so not only does Sam have a product knowledge, he did hardware, software, security. He also was a teacher of technology. So he knows what our teachers, what our staff are going to be able to use. So we're able to get the sense and be able to help lead our department and ensure we have the best practices from the educational leadership side of the house, but also from the education and technology side of the house. We're thrilled to be able to have Sam in our department.
Well, first off, I'm super excited about joining the team. I want to thank the board trustees and executive cabinet for this opportunity. I really look forward to supporting the Delmar community as we move forward into the future together. And I like to say we're being together, so I'm really, really looking forward to that. And I thought we talked about Kmart. I was speaking with Maria earlier before the board meeting started. And I sat in a Kmart classroom two weeks ago, so I'm still not, I'm still not that far away from the classroom. So I look forward to working with all of them.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, so we are at 5.3 here. Join the public regarding agenda items. For anybody who'd like to address the governing board on a particular agenda item, your speakers' slips will need to be turned in at this time. You will be recognized and called to the podium when your request for agenda item comes up. You have three minutes to address the governing board. 5.4 is board approval minutes for the May 25, 2022 meeting. Is our motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
You all favor. Okay, the motion to approve the minutes for the May 25 meeting has passed. 6.1 through 6.25 is to present items. Is there a question to present agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Item 6.1 through 6.25. 8.1 is board report for the California School Dashboard, local indicators requiring for their assessment data and ignorant technology.
All right, well, good evening. I'm happy to be able to share with you information about the local indicator component of the California School Dashboard. Ryan, good evening. I'm happy to share with you information about the local indicator component of the California School Dashboard. Just a quick reminder here that the local indicators for the dashboard are those listed in purple on this chart. You've been provided with a comprehensive report for each of the indicators. A summary of the metrics used for each indicator will be provided over the next few slides. Standards have been met. The district uses the self-reflection tools to determine current status and identify its next steps. The results of this analysis will be submitted to the California School Dashboard in fall of 2022. And as we did last year, we will also post this report to our LCAP webpage on the district website since there's such a long period of time before it's available on the dashboard. The first indicator aligns to state priority on basic services and conditions at all schools. This area requires that we determine if all of our teachers are appropriately assigned. We determine if our students have access to standards aligned curriculum. And finally, we determine if we have safe, clean, and functional school facilities. The facilities are reviewed as part of the annual FID report prepared for each school's state accountability report card or SART. That's the annual meeting. All of our teachers have their base credentials. Our students do have access to standards aligned instructional materials and also access to safe and functional school facilities as a standard with respect to this area. The second local priority is a reflection on implementation of state academic standards. We consider implementation from three perspectives, including professional learning, use of instructional materials, and also through supporting staff in approving delivery of instruction. District also reviews implementation of standards beyond the core academic standards, including education, physical education, visual coordinators, and also for language. The final category expands on the professional learning in place for teachers and also for our educators. The reflection for each category is guided through the use of a state provided program and is used to inform LCAP developments as standards with respect to this area. C, priority three asks districts to reflect on parent and family engagement in three areas. Again, guided by a state provided program. The three areas are building relationships with parents and families, building friendships with parents, developing strategic outcomes, and seeking input from parents and families in decision-making. The other ones match in this area. Priority six focuses on school climate for students. The requirement is to administer a student survey for at least every, at least every other year. Students can raise three through six participating in the DMSB Student Wellness Survey, which we administer annually. Each school site includes action items in their site plans when they get the student survey results. The final priority asks the districts to select measures which indicate whether students have access to a broad course of study. And we consider the following measures. Are all of our students at all school sites, do they have access to standards-based materials? What professional learning has been provided to support the effectiveness of the instructional program? And finally, we monitor schedules and including ensuring that time for P is provided to students. Of course, all of our students at the Delmar Union School District have access to a broad course of study. And so standards met for a comparison. And so, as I shared earlier, the floor report will be posted on our website and also the California School Dashboard in the fall. And this concludes the presentation for local indicators. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? If you can give me an idea, you can set their first point to work group will local control accountability for the LCAP.
All right, once again, it's my pleasure to share information regarding the proposed LCAP meeting. As a reminder, the LCAP is a state-required plan where districts have identified goals for all students. It includes actions and metrics related to those goals. The specific plan addresses state priorities and in particular outlines how students needing additional support academically or socially emotionally are supported. As a reminder, these were all of the actions that we took to develop and refine our LCAP. And these were reviewed in our last presentation in May. Our next step is pending adoption of the plan tonight or to submit the plan to San Diego County Office of Education for final review. And the plan will also be posted on our district website. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
It's a long report, maybe we can run with. So, and in a lot of this is a survey that's included here. And I'm just wondering where the results of the surveys that are mentioned here are at all?
So they were provided in the reports in the board of the last board meeting. And we can certainly make those available as part of the LCAP when we post it on our district website within a company staff with the presentation.
Okay, that'd be great. Are there other questions? This is an action item. Sorry, I have to go back to my. So we need a motion to approve the local control and housing plan. Is our motion to approve the plan?
I'm going to approve.
You, for a second. All of us in favor? Post, post? Okay, the motion to approve the LCAP has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. 8.3 is a board report on school safety, which Jenny had exactly directed to its services. This is the one that we requested in the last board meeting.
Good evening. I'm here to discuss school safety with you as was requested at the last meeting. And as you know, school safety is among our highest priorities and we are deeply committed to providing a safe learning environment at all of our school campuses. So today we're going to talk about school safety and really thinking about school safety and how it relates to physical safety and psychological safety of all of our campuses. So we'll review our physical safety measures. And when we think of psychological safety, thinking about climate and culture. Talking about our comprehensive school safety plans. Talking about our comprehensive school safety plans and resources that are available to us through our community partnerships. We have always been proactive in preparing and securing our campuses. We take our responsibility to provide a safe environment for our students very seriously. And so we're doing ongoing maintenance and assessments of physical sites. We have high-quality perimeter fencing and secure gates at each of our school campuses. Our gates are secured during the school day, which forces a single point of entry at every campus. And we have Raptor technology, and the Raptor technology ensures that all visitors to the school campuses, including our vendors, are electronically screened and tracked. We have emergency response trainings for all of our staff, and we conduct monthly safety drills at all of our campuses. We have, and we will be installing security cameras. We do have security cameras being installed now currently at Pacific Sky. And we will eventually be installing them at all of our campuses. So when we talk about psychological safety, we really are thinking of the climate and culture at our school sites. And as Vivian mentioned, our, part of our wellness surveys really talks about our students and their level of comfort, comfort and their perception of feeling safe out of their school campuses. And we will be introducing a wellness survey this next year for students from kindergarten to sixth grade. So it is a new survey involving our kindergarten and K to two grades. And so all of our grades will be, all of our students will be participating in wellness surveys. And the wellness survey data is used to really, to really inform us on the social emotional needs of our students. And helps to inform our tiered system of support for social emotional needs. And that includes our counseling team, our counselors, school psychologists, and mental health therapists. And all of our schools are also a known place for aid schools, which also contributes to our positive school climates. We have a crisis intervention team that is able to conduct risk assessments and threat assessments at each of our school sites. And that is really to help to determine if a student is in crisis and may be at risk of harming themselves or threatening anyone else on campus. And as I mentioned, each of our school sites has a comprehensive school safety plan. And the school safety plans are developed in alignment with the ED code, California ED code 32280. Which states that each school district in California is responsible for the development of a comprehensive school safety plan. Each school site council reviews and updates the safety plans relevant to the needs of that particular school by March 1st of each year. And then those are brought to, go to the board each year, and those are adopted again. Our school site councils include principals, parents, certified staff members, and class point staff members. And the school site council also develops the annual safety plan based on those physical site assessments that I mentioned. The climate assessments, and then also based on the goals and specific needs of that particular school. Each school site council also consults with law enforcement, and that is part of our annual adoption of the plan. So every year, the, the, the plan is developed in conjunction with the law enforcement. So these are the required components of the comprehensive school safety plan. Each of our plans addresses each of these components, child abuse reporting, disaster procedures, suspension and expulsion policies. Our procedures for notifying teachers of dangerous students, our policies on discrimination and harassment, school-wide dress code, safe and orderly environment, and school discipline. And our disaster procedures include our emergency preparedness plan in response to a variety of different possible emergencies. The comprehensive school safety plan is available for the public to be viewed at the district office. However, any tactical information related to evacuations and emergency procedures is confidential and is not available. So these are board policies that are specific to our campus safety. 3515 Campus Security, which states that the superintendent or designee shall develop procedures that are consistent with goals and objectives of the comprehensive safety plans. 3515.2, which is specific to disruptions and states that the superintendent or designee shall remove any individual who by his or her presence or action is disruptive or threatens to disrupt normal operations at a school campus. So these are just two examples of board policies that we have that help maximize the safety and security of our school campuses. As I mentioned, we, we rely heavily on resources available to our community partners. The San Diego County District Attorney's Office holds the annual school safety summit that we participate in, work closely with, with them through that event. The San Diego Police Department, which provides our school resource officers, and we work with also their PERC teams, which is a psychiatric emergency response team. So as a result of a risk assessment or threat assessment that may be conducted, as a result, we may need to reach out to this PERC team, and they're highly responsive. And work, and are provided to us by the San Diego Police Department. We also work closely with the San Diego County Office of Education. They provide our staff safety trainings and really organize the guidelines for the county for comprehensive school threat assessments. So our next steps are that we will be bringing forward a, an RFP for the installation of new cameras. And hopefully, we'll be able to begin that installation as soon as possible for all of our school sites. We have an options-based response training scheduled for July for our leadership team. And then once school resumes and our staff returns, all, each school site, each staff will review the safety plans and familiarize themselves prior to the start of the school year with those procedures and protocols. And then we will have a team that will also attend the school safety summit offered by the District Attorney's Office. And that usually happens in the fall.
Questions?
So, for parents, what can we provide them, or how can we incorporate them if they want to be more active in helping out the school safety?
I would encourage parents to reach out to their principals, to talk to them about any concerns that they have or any opportunities that are available for them to participate on that campus.
Could you, uh, tell me a little bit more about the Raptor system? What is the screen board with backgrounds?
Yes, it does run a background check. You might know more about this as far as exactly what they are looking for, but I know it is.
I forgot to put details, so I'm gonna just grab one in case another question.
So, the Raptor system is web-based and it screens for a background check for anybody who comes on campus. You have to produce a government-issued ID, sort of look at whether it's a state ID or a government ID. And then it goes through a couple of background systems that will flag somebody if they have a history, especially sexual predator, those kind of things. And so then, a flag comes up, it will alert predetermined people at the school sites so that we can, and it doesn't alert the person, and it's sort of, we have it set up sort of in the front office with, I don't know, that's going on just a minute, and then they can speak to the principal. It has happened on a couple of occasions, and then there's a conversation, the principal's able to intervene, and the person is, uh, allowed to go on campus.
So, the way it's set up is that there, there's, affirmatively, there's only one entry, right? It's a one entry, you walk in, you have to show your government ID, and it goes through Raptor system.
Yes, and that, that's the, the idea about my door gates being locked or secured during the day is that it does drive that single point of entry during the school day. So all visitors to campus must go through the main office. And as I mentioned, we do also require that our vendors also use the Raptor technology.
And as, I guess another reference, the, so the gates are made sure that they're locked, once school starts, those are all, all the gates around the perimeter are locked and only entries. Can you tell me a little more about the, the safety drills that you do for students? And, and later about staff?
Yes, so we are required by ED code to conduct monthly fire drills. And so those happen every month at all of our school sites, and those are part of our safety plans. Also, we are required to conduct quarterly earthquake drills, and so earthquake drills are also part of the monthly drills. We do conduct an options-based response training with staff, which is more of the multiple options response. So the staff are prepared to respond to a variety of different emergencies. It isn't one particular response, it's a, it's a response based on the particular situation. So we ensure that our, the staff that need to be trained on those types of emergency protocols are, receive that training. And then the teachers work specifically with the students in their class to be able to follow the, the teacher's directive during those, those opportunities.
Great. I guess lastly, you meant, I think you mentioned, but the, the school safety plan, the comprehensive school safety plan, where can parents or public find those?
They're maintained, we have them here for public viewing, and as I mentioned, only parts of it are available to the public. Anything with tactical information is not available for people like.
You're at the district office?
Yes.
Thank you.
How do we ensure that all the gates are locked at the time that the, the bell rings?
That is part of the custodial staff's job, that is the immediate, you know, they're, they're going around and checking all the gates, closing all the gates first thing in the morning as we are finishing up the drop-off at the beginning of the day. So it is the top priority of, of that role to start the day.
Is there any electronic news of, of, you know, I know when you have it hooked up to an alarm, it says, oh, back doors open, something like that?
No, not this time.
Just, sorry, one more question, just to give you that on my first question. I just saw it on the website, it does state that we, I mean, I know all schools have the emergency book there, but maybe we could add that. Anyone can look at it if they wanted to come into the district office.
Yes, like, yes.
All the portions of it?
Yes.
More of a comment?
Okay, thank you.
On the options-based response training, how often do teachers receive that?
Every year, at the beginning of the school year, we, the principals review those as part of the, either the welcome back or the, for staff meeting. And like I said, we're gonna be doing a full training with all of our leadership team, and then following up with site staff during, at the beginning of the school year.
And then there was a parent, he asked a question about, what if the child is not with the teacher, the child is alone in the bathroom, or not supervised at that moment? How would that child respond in a disaster situation, what the child's up to do?
So that's where all of the staff on the campus is trained to be on the lookout for any student who is not with a classroom, to be able to, to advise and direct that student in the moment. So that's where other people who are on campus, new duties, staff who are not assigned to a classroom, that would be that responsibility of that adult on campus. And so our, our students are really expected to, and taught to follow the direction of an available adult.
Yeah, having grown up with fire drills and getting into the table for earthquake drill were the norm. Obviously, that worry has expanded to certain other types of emergencies. Are there trains with the children for those types, and how do we do that in a sensitive, non-scary type of way?
Right, and as an elementary school district, we want to ensure that our trainings are really developmentally appropriate for our students. And so that's why we're really focusing on ensuring that the adults know the best response for the situation and are able to advise the students in those moments and direct the students, and that the students are prepared to follow the teacher's directive.
Any more questions, folks?
I just mentioned that the cameras, and that that was in front of the board, what do you think the timeline would be to have this installed? We're, they're expecting that to be in July, and then, or else?
So we expect to have the IT be finished about the board in July, and then we'll be scheduling this, because you cannot, so what we bring is in line with.
Do we, do we view the cameras as a true deterrent? You know, we can broadcast the fact that they have cameras there, and that can easily be detected, or where's it looking back?
But, so it's both, so it's deterrent, and it allows you to look back at footage. And we are legally required to broadcast or post signage to show that there is a camera.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my board report is already updated.
Good evening, President Helfer, Mr. Board, and the clerk. I'm gonna invite Carlos Avalos, our Director of Maintenance Operations and Facilities, to join me. And tonight, we are going to share, I'm gonna give you the update on our facilities, and then Carlos will be talking to you about the summer projects we have coming up. So we'll start with Delmar Hills Academy's modernization. We've shared over the last couple of months, Delmar Hills Academy, we've done some previous community planning sessions. We've been working on geotechnical investigation, site survey, and CEQA. We also talked about the fact that we are going to need to do a seismic retrofit. And so we talked a little bit about the fact that this project has taken a little bit of extra time. So we are at a point now where we are over budget for the whole project. And so when we look at it, part of the, part of the issue that we're running up against right now is because the school was built approximately 50 years ago, all of those concrete walls have to be replaced to be, to be able to do an upgrade. We're going to need, we're looking at some of the things for the beams and the ceiling, all of it is safe at this time, but to make any changes would require us to do a seismic update. So what we are doing for work with the plan office to update the scope. And what we're also identifying are other funding sources for out of scope items. For example, with the measuring in dollars, we're going to need to make sure that building and classrooms are, are taken care of, because that's the primary responsibility with them. But we are also looking at things like our restricted maintenance fund, that we spend every year to do restricted maintenance projects, and using that on things like the field. So Carlos is actually gonna talk about some whole project that we're doing right now to help to take initial steps with the field. And then we'll be looking at other funds, whether it's restricted maintenance or another source that we can make sure that we're able to address the place structures. So we aren't going to not take care of this, so we're going to have to look at how we can plan it, how we can do it over time to ensure that we can get all of those pieces that need to be addressed, while also being able to do the seismic retrofit that's necessary when you are doing a modernization on a school that's 50 years old. So at this point, we were, we're at the point where we've got enough information, we're working with PSA on the review process for what exactly is required for that seismic retrofit. That will probably take another month or two at least, and that'll give us the place at which we will be able to do some update on the. the place at which we will be able to do some update on the scope and, and come back to the board and to the community and talk about what does the interior look like based on the information we've got. We're also looking at an RFP process for at least these back contractor, because having the information and the expertise of a contractor to help us with phasing with value engineering and looking at the best value and the ability to get the most out of the project early on will help us to make the most out of the Delmar Hills Academy modernization. So, um, happy to be able to share a little more, unfortunate that it's taken quite this much to do some things with the, the walls and other parts, but we're going to be able to make sure that we get, uh, a good amount of work done, we'll improve the campus inside and be able to do some things outside tomorrow. Looking at Pacific Sky School, that project's ongoing. Uh, this month, we'll be able to actually share, uh, we are at the point where I was there today, and the roof was open in the middle as they are getting ready to install the skylights. Uh, that's an exciting step to take, they're actually putting in mulch in areas so that you have arc downs, and that they, instead of looking just like dirt where we have some planters, that's starting to come together. The upper grade, uh, play structures are getting the, uh, the fall zones that are coming in, and it's really cool to be, they, they fly drones once a month, so we just got in that drone update. Uh, and I just want to point out, it's come up in, uh, pre, the previous, uh, four presentations, questions about solar, so this is our solar, so this is over the MUR Innovation Center, this is at the beginning of the first classroom building, so we have a, a good photovoltaic system that's going to really be able to offset most of the energy we use, uh, and we're excited to see the next one of these where we actually have the skylights in. A nice look at one of our two play structures in the, uh, the main play area, and you can see that the fields are really starting to gather, come together. So the, uh, DG tracks being laid out, that we're doing some work in, uh, sort of, for lack of a better word, kind of rototilling that to be able to set it up so that you put saw in and build out a field. And then just some, uh, big picture kind of looking in from the north end, uh, this is our, uh, kitchen, that will be done last, but it's coming along, our actual program, which it looks like will be, those classrooms will be finished in time to start the school year, which is very exciting, because you'll be able to start the program in their actual classrooms rather than having to use other, other spaces. Uh, and then just a look from the west of Houston, so this would be the, uh, the lunch area at the back of the multi-use space, and then our primary. And so coming along, really exciting, we're really talking about punch lists and closing out pieces of it and steps to get, uh, equipment, and, uh, they're actually hanging TVs today. So, um, very exciting to see that project continue moving forward. And then with our, uh, Delmar High School rebuilt, uh, and we don't have a lot of, uh, share after last month, we do have the project continuing to be stopped. Uh, I did want to share that we still have not gotten approval to restore the stormwater outfalls. Uh, as we've shared, we had, did reach out to Procopio, uh, on behalf of Save the Field, we have reached out to State Parks, and, uh, we were made aware, State Parks has written a letter to Procopio and to Save the Field, uh, that recommended the work go forward, and actually spoke to the, uh, the, the environmental impact of a rain event without those outfalls being fin- finished. That was sent on June 6th, we're now on June 22nd, and, uh, we're talking about over two weeks later, we still have not gotten approval, and so we're really baffled that this critical environmental work is being, being held up by Save the Field. So at this point, I don't have much more to, uh, to share, we will continue to push for that because we want to make sure that we finish at least that piece while we're going through and trying to fight the litigation to be able to start the full project as well. And with that, I'll hand it over to Carlos to speak on some of the projects.
Good evening, it's my pleasure to, uh, report to you the summer project update that we, uh, started as of June 6th, when the school got out. Part of our summer projects is the modern learning student, we're remodeling, uh, total 42 classrooms district-wide, which includes new carpet, paint, uh, whiteboard walls, and new modern furniture. And this is, uh, just to note, the most classrooms we've done in one summer, and then for next summer, we also plan to do another 42 classrooms, um, with the same, same center scope. And then as Mr. Phil had mentioned, you know, it's a, for the use of some, of our restricted maintenance funds, we're being able to remodel some of our fields. Uh, we've done some thorough investigation and some walkthroughs and identified areas that needed, um, some field renovations. So at Sycamore Ranch, we're going to be redoing the kindergarten playfield and the primary playfield, um, and with, keeping in mind giving access to the community, so we left the, um, upper grade field open for community access after after school hours. And same with the Delmar Hills, so we've cut it up in house so that we could give access and green space to the community during the summer, while we renovate that field and it should be ready to use for our students, um, when they come back to school in August 15. And then another, uh, big portion of our summer projects are, they're strict for replacement happening at Ashley Falls and Carmel, Delmar. So we'll be replacing the aging thing structures and some of the, uh, old Barker wood chips to be new rubberized, um, safer surface at the bottom. You can tell at one of the pictures there at the bottom right, that's Ashley Falls with the multiple repairs to that surface, uh, so it's definitely due for an upgrade and, uh, replacement. And with that, is there any questions?
I just have a question about shade and structures, are we doing enough of that? Solving enough of that?
So we haven't moved into shade structure, we identified play structures as the first need in doing some of these summer upgrades. Shade tests come up, and it'd be something we'll start to review as, as a next step. And we are including more shade in the play structures that we're doing, so if you look at the play structures, they really have wide shade areas, um, as opposed to the traditional older one where there was no shade. And so we've really, um, as we've continued to, uh, make improvements to play, we've tried to also improve the amount of shade we're applying.
Yeah, I was referring to shade structures for the play structures, thanks.
Well, then, yes, we are definitely including that in the projects we're having this summer. We are also, though, looking at things like, as we're moving the tents, which were always meant to be a, a temporary, uh, item, what do we need to do as a next step for areas for shade that are maybe adjacent to fields and some things like that? So that is a next thing that we are starting to evaluate, looking at how we might, how many improvements there.
Great, thank you, it's, yeah, it's great to hear that, as you're looking forward to doing the, uh, renovating the play structure, that you think, uh, about shade, I think it's a big issue, so, um, as you keep that in mind. Um, and, uh, I have a question, just to kind of clarify, the, when you're talking about Delmar High School with regards to the outfall, the outfall is that portion that is, is entering the canyon, correct?
Correct, there are two outfalls, one is on the west side and sort of the edge of where the, uh, Blacktop used to end. Uh, I've shown pictures in the past where literally the Blacktop was crumbling, and the, uh, storm drain had disconnected from the, uh, outfall portion. And what happens is, there's a storm drain, it comes in and it goes down a tube, and then it's called the energy dissipator, so this dissipates the energy of the rainwater that's coming out, and reduces the flow as it comes down and into the reserve. And this is rainwater that's coming from not just our campus, but from the localized community. So this, this, uh, drainage system is part of the cities that we have easements, has easements through our property, so it's a big drain, it's a big deal because of the amount of water that can flow through. And then there's one on the, uh, south side as well, that, uh, is near where the old backstop used to be.
So if we, so if this outfall wasn't fixed, what would have, what would, it's currently, it's not, it's still in frosty, but if it's not fixed, what, what happens?
So the water then flows freely, it's already created a, a gully in that area, and has really eroded. We've, over the last number of years, even three, I remember, and we actually worked with State Parks, because when you have, uh, gully erosion like that, you have the invasive species that start to grow in there, because it's not the native species that grows. And then the flow that goes down into the reserve, uh, has caused issues with trails. So State Parks, which that was because of some of the problems that you come up with, um, washing out trails and causing problems in that, in that area as well. So there's the environmental impact, the trail impact as well in the reserve.
So we don't fix it, there's a, there's an environmental impact to the current canyon, or the canyon currently?
Absolutely.
And so we're asking, or Prokopio and asking Save the Field to allow us to then go forward and help fix that portion of the problem right now?
Yes, and make an improvement in the environment.
Okay, we're still waiting for that?
And we are not, we're waiting for approval.
Correct, okay, thank you.
And when, how long ago did we first ask for that approval?
We asked for that soon after the stay was issued, and, uh, there was the desire to hear about the State Parks was expressed to us, and then the State Parks letter was, uh, sent out on June 6th, 16 days ago.
Hopefully they give us that approval soon, because I'd love to see that area, face other environments in the sound.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, 9.2 is a important information item on professional services for, for professional learning.
All right, thank you, we're following, Mr. Lawrence, and the clerk, the clerk. Uh, this evening, 9.2, we are speaking on, uh, professional learning center. Uh, I'll cover current need, options to be reviewed, and some of those next steps. So when we look at professional learning and professional learning center, our current need is for a professional learning center that allows us to do, conduct professional learning and community work with up to 50 participants. Uh, our constructional services team averages about three days per week during the school day, uh, during the school day and during the school year in doing professional learning. Uh, there is additional use after the school day, we look at committees such as our diversity and inclusion and other districts-wide committees. Currently, our district training center, uh, that previously, uh, we were using this space, uh, but as we had development next door, we've seen parking reduce down to, uh, 10 to 15, and so we don't have the parking and the ability to get staff, uh, that large of a number into the space to use the district training center. As part of the need, uh, we recognize from the LCAP survey that it is identified in, uh, as top priority for the community, it's been identified in District Snap 2022, and as you know, we support professional learning, we've been doing that, and it's really what sets our district apart, so looking at identifying a space for that. During this year, the 21, 22 school year, space has been a problem. MURs and other spaces have been used, uh, we've had variable resources across sites, so when I talk instructional services, you go to one site and the projector works one way, and the way that we're using, uh, say, an Apple TV, whereas that varies from another site, the resources we have at the sites vary related to whiteboards and seating and table. Uh, and then the impact of different district staff has been notable, uh, we're transporting resources because we're going to multiple sites, uh, and that leads staff to not be available at the district office, and it's just not efficient. Uh, and then there's a site impact, and the reason we're going to multiple sites is because, uh, the MUR is unavailable when we're doing the training at one site, and so to not impact one site every day, you need to go to multiple sites, that then impacts that MUR for that day, site office, custodial staff are then impacted because they're helping to support the professional learning during that day. And then I just did cite professional learning being a need for really world-class organizations anywhere. WD-40 is an example, because, uh, and I share this because we toured WD-40, we've done some work, and we know that they specifically included a professional learning space in their, uh, offices. Uh, we know that training and support of adults is, uh, equals direct impact to our students, and so that's where that need for high-quality learning environment that our staff has access to, uh, comes in. And then looking back, uh, options that are reviewed, you know, when we talked about this at the budget workshop, uh, you know, there was, talked about some options reviewed, and talked about looking further, and are there other things that we haven't thought about or haven't reviewed? And so we, previously with, uh, Kathy Burks, there was a review of transportation from other sites to the district office, looked at renting alternative locations, that'd be a potential option, uh, talked about parking in neighboring unit spaces, which at times works, but at other times it's not, it's inconsistent. We've also looked at MURs, uh, MUR is an, as an option is the right size, so they give us the space, but it's generally set up for a number of students to come to them before, um, and doesn't have the right equipment. Uh, if we decide to outfit that and equip it and make it so that it has the right equipment, then the site doesn't have to be used, or in a spot where, and we have now taken over the MUR, so a school site doesn't have to use for that MUR. We've looked into parking and redevelopment and haven't been able to get a response, so, um, that's also a couple of years down the road, but we have reached out a couple of times to try to get, uh, some input from them. And so then we also looked at combining two existing classrooms, we've reviewed sites across the district to look at what might be the outflow options to be, looking at, um, Ocean Air is an example, and Ashley Falls, and Torrey Hills. So what we recommend as a solution would be to analyze the Torrey Hills, uh, current two classrooms, uh, as just basis for professional learning. Uh, I say analyze because if we are going to take two classrooms anywhere in the district, you're going to need to look at the structure, and we're going to need some support and analysis from an architect to see, can we, um, reasonably turn that into a single space that would have enough space for, uh, that large of a group? We would then, uh, present that analysis to the board of trustees, and if modernization of this space, uh, is acceptable, we could then give it the, the design process, and doing a modernization like this would be the most cost-effective solution as opposed to, uh, you know, building a new space to, to accommodate. The space that we are reviewing, and I apologize, it's smaller than it looked when I was creating it, uh, this is a, uh, two classrooms that have, were used, uh, for our, um, actual programming, ECDC. Uh, we had used it for some special ed offices at a certain time, it is not being specifically used right now. The location is great because we have a gate, so you can safely access this with staff and have them directly access the space. There's parking in this in, and Torrey Hills also has street parking, so it sets us up for a situation where you'll have easier access to it and, uh, the ability to get our staff in and be able to use the space. So the next steps would be board direction regarding whether we would board with analysis of Torrey Hills, and if so directed, then we would bring an architect to the board, uh, for approval to analyze and potentially design that work. Uh, you have to answer the questions again?
Thanks, Chris. Um, so I know we closed during COVID the ECDC Torrey Hills, right? And we are now experiencing growth in ECDC, how are we going to accommodate if we have closed that, where are the other students going to go?
So that was never classroom space, it was office, uh, and, uh, previously after-school programs used one of those rooms and our site team leads, and the other side was office space, uh, it was Justin Segal's office, and there was some space that a number of years ago was used for some specialized staff. So I don't think it would impact the, the student.
So all the people that are there now would stay there if we combined?
So they've been moved, uh, as we've been taking some steps, and are actually located at Ashley Falls at this point.
So no, no one's using the space there right now?
Well, we've found some small uses, but it isn't a, it isn't used for, it's one of those where we have a couple of extra classrooms, and so we'll, you know, have, uh, some of our, uh, special ed staff will use it, uh, when they need an extra space, but it isn't a identified need of a space in there right now.
They're two full classroom size.
Correct.
Structures. Um, and then, another question was, how many days out of the year, um, you know, you said average about three days a week, you have trainings, but how many days out of, out of the school year do you have, or, you know, not school year, even in the summertime, the 50 participating days, would you say?
I would say that, um... I would say that 50 is the largest we would typically accommodate, but it can range from 35 to 40 is very average. So for example, when we have our Ron Richart cohort, um, that is a very average size. Our, um, Great Beginnings Professional Learning, which will take place the two days prior to the start of the teacher work week, that's about 35 to 40 participants already. So those are our largest size, um, a room such as that could be also used for our strategic planning events if we did that, um, and then we have other places where we can do, navigate with smaller groups.
So I, I mean, I'm just trying to get a sense of how many days a month would you need a space that accommodated 35 to 50 people?
I would say that varies based on the month, but anywhere from, um, could be four days a week, we have some days where it's, there's four days of training, and on those days, we sometimes have, that they're doubled up, we're running two trainings, one in one space, one in another with our larger participants. Um, in a month of like, uh, December or approaching parent conferences, we stay away from professional learning, so there would be nothing happening.
Okay, I didn't, I'd like to see, uh, like, an actual amount of days, um, you know, and, and the amount of participants.
Be happy to share our professional learning calendar with you.
Yeah, something like that, that would be great. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Chris, this is the current learning center, this room here?
Yes.
Okay, so, can you just kind of go over, like, what was intended initially for this space, and did you always plan to have parking in a temporary situations adjacent lot? When did that change about just a second?
So this was developed as the Training Center and Board Meeting Room, and was, so it, I'm sorry.
So when it was developed originally, where was the parking intended to be?
So when we developed it originally, I think we were looking at having what parking here, and then there was a parking lot next door that we were using as the overflow parking area.
That was the intention, when you originally built the space, how the intention was to use bar parking in the space next door?
Well, and we also needed this for a board meeting room, so it was kind of a two-piece buildup.
Okay. And so now, just for clarity, so that now there's a construction project happening next door, and so we can't park there. So can you talk about the different alternatives and where to tell that you explore for other parking in this, in this, you know, renting unused spaces from other tenants, shuttling participants to here from a nearby shopping center or somewhere else they could park? What are the alternatives that were looked at?
We looked at both of those, we reached out to neighboring members of the development, asked about whether we could branch or whether we could just borrow. We've been allowed to use them, but it's as needed, and so there are many times where we've asked for certain dates and they aren't able to provide access to parking. Oftentimes, it's, we give you ten spots and you get to the number, so it's variability of it makes it hard to plan out what professional learning conduit actually does in the course of the year and not know if we can hold that training here. And looking at the idea of transportation, you know, Kathy did analysis on critically transported, so the, the issue with that became, the vehicle, who's going to drive? We don't have a staff member to be a bus driver for those periods of time. Staffing it and, and location was problematic about getting the staff to accommodate them. Knowing neighboring districts and what we're doing with Delmar Heights, any bus driver or transportation driver has been, they should hire, it's hiring on periodic basis, and it's small, smaller hours is concerning.
And have you ever thought about selling this building and finding another building that would accommodate both the training center and district office space?
I have not looked into that as an option.
I think that's an option to explore. Another question, the total cost of the project, I think you mentioned before budget workshop, of what would to anticipate the actual construction cost of the project maybe, you know, you don't have a contractor.
Yeah, so a modernization of a whole thousand square feet, we think would cost, all in, somewhere in millions, maybe a little over a million dollars.
And then, in addition, it's a quarter million dollars of architectural services?
A quarter million dollars would be the main soft costs, and then if you set four hundred dollars a square foot, which is a reasonable estimate for a modernization, that'd be a three-hundred thousand, so we're talking about a little over a million. There may be some other ancillary costs that are, including somewhere in that million, like total cost.
And how long would it take, like, when would this be operational, this type of work?
We'd probably need about a year to do the planning analysis and get to construction. So, you know, we started, now we'd be looking at next summer being able to do it. And then, you know, obviously, it'd be on campus, we want to be conscious of when we do construction, how we're able to list that up. It's, these are portable, right? Portable modular, yeah.
So there's no DSA improvement?
There's DSA improvement, because we're on a, and even though it's typically mainly for adults, it's still on an active case of campus, so that's why I would take that period, because we'd have good DSA.
And I know in your diagram, it's nice, a little bit too located next to a parking lot, but the concern is the gate, and that gate kind of disrupts the single-point inventory concept that we have on campus. Why would we not continue with that single-point inventory concept and allow other accessible?
Well, we have multiple gates in all of our communities. What we'd be looking at would be how we might be able to monitor that, that gate and allow access just for our teachers when they're coming out, they're not going on and off repeatedly, so they're really coming on at one point, then they're for a training for a period of time, and then leaving, so it's not an in-and-out. I don't think that we have an issue there, because then we'd be able to monitor and have, again, there's a ten, fifteen-minute period where you're allowing people in, and then they're very close to it, so it makes it easy to monitor rather than having them in a training room that's way across campus, and how do we then have people coming on maybe at a slightly different timeframe than the start of school day?
So I brought that up just to be cognizant of that, there would have to be some security.
For sure, there has to be some, somebody who's observing and looking at that. We had it as the after-school program, and the specialized, we had a little bus system on it, and so we could reuse or put in a new system like that, but we'd absolutely, security be number one. I think that this is actually a very secure location, and this is part of the benefit of if we were to move forward, to move forward at that site, because it is secure, it's off the side, and you'd be able to monitor. Thank you.
So the total cost, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is around three million?
No, it'd be a little over a million dollars.
Oh, a little over a million total, sorry, I was providing you that figure. So where would that come from, which one?
That would likely come from Fund Forty, because it's not something that we've put into our measuring them funds, and it's not something that would be taken out of the general fund.
And just to clarify, Fund Forty is?
Apologies, Fund Forty is for capital improvements, much of a discount thanks to the hard work of Mr. Rappner and getting cost overruns from North City West.
And how much do you currently have in that fund?
A little over sixty million dollars.
What does professional development training look like right now in terms of, is it mostly in just a room and you need, what is the need from it? Like, you know, in the past, you know, a couple of years, and we've, a lot of people, I think, have been doing their trainings online, what does it look like currently for online?
In our district, we're committed to that face-to-face interaction, in-person professional learning, so all of our professional learning is conducted in person, as well as all of our committee meetings that we have, our district equity advisory committee, that's thirty-plus people, that's an in-person meeting. And is that what you're looking for when you say what it typically looks like?
Yeah, and I guess the question really is like, is it necessary that it is? I mean, because I think one of the things that we kind of learned in the past couple of years is that a lot of things we do on Zoom, it's, you know, it's not the best, but it can be done. And so, you know, what is your, do you think that it could be done more online? Is that a possibility, or is it something that is, it must be done in person?
Our professional learning needs to occur in person. Meetings can be managed online, and still, I would say that those aren't as effective as in-person meetings.
I think too, when we bring in somebody like Ron Richart, who has such expertise, and I think something is lost when you have a virtual version of Ron Richart, I mean, we can do YouTube videos, we were gonna, but having that interaction, and then, I know I'm not leading, but I know that we then have opportunities for staff to work directly with Ron, and then they're going into classrooms, so there are pieces that you just can't do via Zoom now.
Yeah, I mean, part of my thinking is that, is it a matter of, because one of the, well, obviously, it's a parking situation here. And I know you haven't had a response from the next door, I would like to hear a response from them to see what, obviously, if it was, if they had a response, then that'd be great. If there was a facility that it could use, that would be fantastic, that would solve this problem, sorry. You know, so I'm kind of wondering, like, what are, what are we doing currently? You know, is it a matter of kind of run around in various locations, which I understand is not sustainable and cynical, so is it something that you can kind of just handle for like the next year? You're gonna have to, we're gonna have to wait for a year anyway for this to be built, so what will that look like? And is that something that, if we do this for a year or two, parking might open up somewhere? So I don't want to be in a situation where we authorize this project, and then we have parking that pops up, and, and we have a facility here that can be used, because really, the issue with this facility is that we're just lacking parking. And so I'm trying to figure out, what can we do in the interim, and if there is just an interim period, or if it is something that is not going to be resolved ever?
I, I don't know that I have much, yeah, I mean, that's kind of what we've been wrestling with as well. And I don't see necessarily a solution, so that's where I, you know, when we look at the needs of construction services, that's where we're trying to come in and come up with a solution that, you know, because if this does drag out, I mean, they're building, building a multi-multi-million dollar project, and they even want to reserve that parking for the people who are leasing that. I have to be able to respond to that, I think that they're more invested in the build right now. We'll certainly try again, but that's kind of where we're at as well, and I think that there's, my concern has just been in supporting those departments. Be unknown to, if we kick the can a couple of years and we're still bugging stuff around, and it's not ideal to set, then maybe that, that would be.
Follow-up question from 9.1, you mentioned that there's going to be some cost or there already are cost overruns, for the Delmar Hills modernization project, do we have an estimate of that, or maybe you said it already, but I'm forgetting the figure?
I don't have a number for you yet, I do think that things like, by doing that in the pieces that we are breaking them out, that things like our restricted maintenance, that is a certain amount we need to spend each year, we'll be able to find ways to include parts in. It works out that by doing the classroom building with measurement and thinking about things like fields and place structure, those are maintenance items, so we can kind of build those in over time.
I mean, I'm just wondering, how much is going to eat into the Fund Forty, are we pulling funds for Fund Forty from that?
No, we're not.
Not? We have nothing, and?
No, so restricted maintenance, we spend three percent of our revenue each year on restricted maintenance projects, and so those are identified that each year, and we, we need to spend that amount. And so what we're going to then do is find ways to build some of those pieces of Delmar Hills in, so that we can ensure, that field just needs work, I mean, as Carla showed, the picture from afar, it hints to the goal, so there are things that we know we need to make improvements. And so we'll, we'll, part of sharing that is that we know that we need to do the building, we also know that there are some needs there, if it won't be Fund Forty, it will be through maintenance that we are going to have to spend on each year.
Are there any, I mean, we always want to maximize our space, we have these two buildings that are, two rooms that are, it seems to be they're underutilized at this point, and I'm just wondering if there's any other consideration we've given to this space to use, utilize them, other means besides a training space?
We don't have a direct need right now, I mean, we always find ways to utilize the space at our site, so, you know, if you, in elementary school, if you have five open classrooms, we're gonna find a way to use those five open classrooms for something, but it isn't something that has a direct need right now.
I mean, another idea is there could be a master plus office, training space in this area, especially with Hyde Leffing right here, I may not know any, and then has a huge training center, so another thing that you might look into is partnerships with corporations in the area that are using our training centers all the time. And if you know in advance what your schedule is for the year, which it seems like it's pretty well planned out, you could schedule ahead, you know, to book space and some of those centers, and just with the shifting office landscape, you know, I know that a lot of companies are rethinking their space needs, and they might be willing to do that. But another idea is just what are the other school districts doing? Can we use space at one of the local high schools for trainings on a regular basis? What do, what does San De Hito do for their trainings, can we share that facility, can we research along the beach facilities? You know, just trying to get a little creative about, you know, using other space that's already existing, while meeting the goal of having a consistent space, the right materials and the right setup. And, you know, I think that it's worth pursuing that, and I still think it's worth pursuing alternatives for a space that's actually adjacent to the district office space, because otherwise you have, then you have like two different totally separate facilities, which I mean, I know in the past has been brought forward as a detriment, we could build this space, and one of the advantages of building this space is it's adjacent to district office space, and that's why we wanted to have the professional learning center here. So I think that there are more alternatives to explore here before we go down the road of building out a million-dollar-plus training facility.
Thank you.
Another question. Okay, thank you. I think you're saying there, oh, no, Mark Pong is coming up for 10.1, Board Review and Adoption of the 2022-23 Proposed Budget for All Districts.
Good evening, President and Detective Paul, and Ms. Court, I'm here with our Director of Fiscal Services, Mark Pong, to present our proposed budget for the 2022-23 school year. In our presentation, we'll go over the vision, mission, and our budget development, we'll talk about our general fund summary, including the 22, 23 revenues and expenditures, we'll look at our local reserve requirements, our multi-year projection, and we'll do a look ahead and talk about other funds beyond the general fund. So we'll start with our vision, mission, and budget development process, and our district, our district design and our vision of the Everland in pursuit of this extraordinary school experience, and our mission to ignite and empower students to advance the world, always guides the budget development that we embark on each year. And then when we look at that budget development, we are budgeting based on our district design 2022 and the goals that we have in DB22, 2022, and the local LCAP. And then we're also looking to maintain a physically sound reserve. We continue to work to maintain this reserve based on the unique needs of the community-funded districts, and we continue to strive to communicate the budget to our stakeholders and community partners, and remember that it is a desirable and understandable, knowing that it is a big document with a lot of information. So we'll look at our general fund summary, and we'll start with the revenue, and as we look at the revenue, at our first read last month, we showed revenues of about sixty-nine point five million dollars. Our proposed budget shows those revenues up to seventy point nine, almost seventy-one million dollars, and we have a difference, an increase in our revenue in a couple of areas at about one point five million dollars. So if we look at the updates and the assumptions, we have some property tax revenue increase from three and a half to five percent, we've had positive news with our property taxes coming in, and positive news looking at what we would expect for next year. As you know, last month, we had the foundation donate one point three million, we're budgeting one point one three million, so we have a nice increase from the foundation, and we had some increase for our self-revenue. And then a little bit of it offsets there, we've increased our deferred maintenance fund for teen transfer from a half a percent to one percent, and this is reducing the increase that we're seeing in revenue by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is really based on, as a district, our priority since passing the bond or you look before, was looking at, with the bond, being able to pay for the maintenance after the bond. And so looking at the budget we have, we are recommending, and we're proposing a budget that has a little bit more going toward deferred maintenance fund to plan for the future. We also see the other assumptions that we see each year with our whole harmless state aid, and it's budgeted at one point two million dollars. As a reminder, this amount is past allocated categorical funding, and it's less than the permanent basic, that less the permanent basic aid reduction, so when we went through that basic aid reduction, we lost that two and a half million, so we have the whole harmless that is, that remains, and then we have our education protection account, which is two hundred dollars for ADA, and based on our P2 ADA of thirty-nine, here, so that's seven hundred eighty thousand dollars. Looking at the revenue, you'll see in this pie chart, LCFF sources are, as usual, the main funding source that we have, these are mostly made up of our property taxes, we'll also note the Sturrs-on-Behalf contribution. We'll also note the STIRS on behalf contribution of $4.1 million. And this is a pass-through, so we have revenue of $4.1 million. And this is the state making an on behalf contribution. And then we'll have an associated expenditure for the same amount. So as we move into our expenditure summary, when we look at expenditures, we have our first read of almost $70 million. Our proposed budget is at $70.9 million. And you'll see the difference there of about $90,000. Much of that comes from our social science curriculum adoption. And so we have moved the social science curriculum adoption into our budget for this year. I know we've reserved for that over a couple of years at this point. And we see that as something that we will likely have an expense for this year. We also have assumptions based on, we shared at the first read, the agreement with the union that was approved at a five percent increase in salary and the $1,500 AL cap increase. We have some increases we, and reallocation of staff for Pacific Sky School opening. The teachers, we have continued to budget to meet the lower class size in the upper grades. Social motion learning supports, continuing our OPEC trust contribution. And we have the increase in pension rates this year of 16.9% to 19.1%. And STIRS, INFRS, 22.9, 25, almost 25.4. Those are projected to then even out after this year. Though, you know, pending the legislature at STIRS or that board of earth, there could be something that could change, but that is expected to flatten. We have the implementation of universal meals that we budgeted for, a Chromebook refresh. We are continuing our Delmar Heights, we will transportation. And we have new app releases as we have updated our staff computers and our student staff backups. Then as we look at the expenditures as a pie chart, we are at people business. And so you'll see that the bulk of our costs come from our employees. I'll note what shows up as the second largest cost, the pension cost, and that's where that on the half contribution goes through. So there is the some of the inflation there because the state is making contribution on the half of us and we have the associated revenue in that area. Total salary benefits are 85%. And again, our total expenditures is $70.9 million. So when you put that together, that leads to our ending fund balance. And for the 22, 23 proposed budget, we have a relatively flat even budget with a small increase of $80,000. That leads us to having an ending fund balance of $18.3 million. I'll point out our restricted fund is at 1.4, which has gone down as we spent some of those restricted funds. And those are the funds we have for, as I previously, and much of it now with our educator effectiveness block grant that are spent out over a plan of five years. As you'll see that slowly go down over time. We have our minimum reserve policy for the district, 15%, 15.6 million. Our three percent minimum state reserve, 2.1 million. And then the unassigned and unappropriated order, almost 4.1 million, with a ending reserve percentage of 23, of unrestricted general fund percentage of 23.8%. So when we have an ending fund balance that is greater than the minimum reserve, we need to substantiate that. So we have currently assigned and unassigned funds of 19.4 million. And that minimum reserve, three percent, is 2.1. So we have 17.2 million dollars to substantiate. If we look at that 4.1 million dollars, that is being reserved for basic aid stabilization, reserved for pensions, OPEC, and future obligations. And as a community-funded district, we're dependent upon property taxes, which fluctuate. And we've seen the state make adjustments to what's provided to community-funded districts in the past, especially in times of an economic downturn. So having some extended reserve to be able to weather those storms is important. The board has recognized this and has the requirement that at least 15% on top of that three percent. And that's listed for our 10.6 million dollars. And then we do have 2.5 million for our Pacific Sky School Operations Reserve Fund 17. That has gone down as we are planning to spend some of that this year. And then that has been reserved for the operations of Pacific Sky as we get that school started. So we have a total need, we have in excess of the three percent of 17.2 million dollars that we're substantiating. That'll lead us to our multi-year projection. And so as we look at the multi-year projection, we have revenues in our current base year of 70.9, almost 71 million dollars. That goes up to 72.6 million dollars in our first projected out year and 74.4 in our second out year, 74.25. Our expenditures will start at 72.9 million dollars. This just shared about $80 million, $80,000 more revenue than expenditure. And then our first out year, we're expenditures of 71.5. And then in 24, 25, expenditures of 72.9 million dollars. When we look at the NYPD and the ending fund balance, this brings us at the end of this budgeted year, it would bring us to 18.3 million dollars. And as we shared, that would be 23.8% of our unrestricted fund reserve. When we look at 23, 24, we get almost 1.2 million dollars of an increase instead of bringing our ending fund bank, fund balance to 19.5 million dollars. We also have, starting to see some decreases we shared in restricted funds in this line here. It leads to our unrestricted general fund reserve increasing to 26%. And then we see in our second projected year, a 1.5 million dollar increase to the reserve and a unrestricted fund percentage of 28%. And then looking ahead, we are still awaiting the final state budget in trailer bill language. While the budget's been sent to the governor, that final budget will be signed later this month. And in the trailer bill language, that really stipulates how it's carried out is some of the really important piece to that. We're monitoring universal transitional kindergarten funding. As you know, we have advocated strongly on behalf of our, our community-funded districts and those across the states to get funding. We are also monitoring and starting to advocate for funding should home preschool transportation come through. That is right now projected for 27, 28, so there's some time there. But if that becomes a requirement, advocating for funding to come to community-funded districts in that area. We are monitoring whether deferred maintenance funding is included. It was removed in a portion of it. And then one time discretionary block grants, this $8 billion the governor proposed. It was 8.5 billion dollars in the budget that's sent to the governor. So we're looking at what the requirements for that funding are. And, and we should be getting some money per ADA. But we want to know what the requirements are for spending it and how much we'll be getting. We'll be updating the board as we have more information on that. And then opening of Pacific Sky School, we'll be monitoring that closely and looking at the opening, the costs associated, our universal meals implementation, there's been a lot of work. Our departments, our whole districts, our principals, we've been meeting with the site staff and looking at how rolling that out and costs associated. And of course, continue to monitor enrollments and staffing projections as we move through the year. Is that all, Mark, to present on the other funds?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening. So Chris just reviewed the general fund, but we have a few other major funds that we check out for the district. The first one that I'll review is Fund 14, which is the cafeteria fund. We're looking at next year implementing the universal meals where we have to provide breakfast and lunch, so two meals for students regardless of income eligibility. So whoever wishes to participate in it will be able to. As we await the opening of the central kitchen, it's projected to open in January 2023. We know that we'll have, we are already contracted with OKC, a company that will vend our meals. And we know that during that first half of the year, it's a little bit of a higher cost to vend meals. So we are seeing here a contribution of about $350,000 to help break, help this fund break even. And so we'll be able to provide a better update in the first interim once we have what the anticipation is like for the universal meals. Next is our Fund 14, which is the deferred maintenance. As Chris had previously mentioned, this is where we commit 50% or 1% of our property taxes towards future deferred maintenance needs. So we see an increase to the fund balance of about $585,000. So we'll have 2.2 million at the end of next year. Fund 17 is our special reserve, an extension of the general fund, which we've been reserving, setting aside funds for the opening of Pacific Sky School. And this is also where we'll be taking the funds for the cafeteria fund contribution. So at the end of the year, we'll have 2.5 million in this fund. Fund 21 is where we account for the general allocation bond, measuring M. So far, we've issued two series of bonds. We issued Series A for $55.3 million back in October 2019. And last month, we just issued the second series, Series B, and the amount is 64 million. And so we can see that the ending fund balance had 77.7 million because of that issuance. And we can see the expenditures of about 44 million to build the projects under measuring M. So the major projects under measure M for this coming year are completing Pacific Sky School, the Delmar Heights and Delmar Hills projects. And then we have some other projects throughout the district for the implementation of universal meals, creating the serbries at all the school sites that don't accept Pacific Sky School, everyone will have a serbry. So installing a serbry at new school, looking at the playgrounds, the security, and then as well as modernizing a lot of the learning environments as promised, Chris had mentioned earlier. Fund 25 is our technical facility funds. And this is where we collect developer fees for additions or new builds in the district. We can see an increase to the fund balance of 94,000. At the end of the year, we'll have 1.2 million. And this, these funds have been earmarked for the modernization of Carmel Del Mar. This one is kind of a new fund. The Fund 35 is the school facilities fund. So back in the summer of 2015, we did a partial modernization on Carmel Del Mar. And the state, this is a state matching funds that we just received at the end of this, just a few months ago. So we received about 282,000 back for this project that we'll be using towards our facilities. We have Fund 40, which Chris brought up earlier. We have about 6.4 million here. So as we consider the training center and the next site on 10.3, our Suite 103 by the maintenance building, these are the funds that are available for those projects. We have Fund 49, which is our community facilities districts. We have two, they're known as Mallaroo districts also. We have 95-1, which covers 40 Hills and Ocean Air. And then 99-1, which covers Sycamore Ridge and Pacific Sky School. And so when we look at the expenditures here, 10 million, part of it is for the debt service that was acquired to build the facilities in 40 Hills, Ocean Air, and Sycamore Ridge, and sorry, Pacific Sky. And as well as the final cost to finish up the Pacific Sky School. So about 6, 9 of this is for Pacific Sky construction. And then when we look at Fund 63, it's our enterprise fund, which we take into tuition for our early childhood development center and after school programs. This was one of the funds that was heavily impacted during COVID. But we can see now that the program has returned and, you know, we're at capacity. This summer, we started a preschool summer program, the cancer at capacity. Next year, we'll also be implementing one of the state programs, which is the expanded learning opportunities program. Where we'll be able to provide some of our needy students with free extended programs. So we'll see an increase of about 400,000 to this program. And then finally, we have a trust fund, Fund 73. So we are interested in this account. And we have about 35,000. And it's for the Delmar Heights School in honor of, in memory of parent element. And these funds, the interest can be used in, for library-related needs. And that's our presentation.
I don't know, should we move back to Fund 40? Is there a minimum amount that we'd like to keep in that fund?
No, those funds are currently assigned by the, by the board for the facilities. So there's no need for them.
So does it matter if we draw them like that? I'm just as far as TK and if it's not funded, can you talk about how that might impact the budget both from a general fund perspective and also for our facilities needs?
From a general fund perspective, we'd be looking at increasing staffing. And so it's hard to know exactly what the number of students would show up. But currently it is staffed at 12 to one and is projected to move to 10 to one. So you have one full-time teacher and one aide in that class. So the staffing just in general is at a higher level. So there would be a noticeable impact. And as we've talked with other districts and we've discussed, you know, over time, it is very likely that more and more people would attend, should there be an offering. That, then the other potential issue is that TK students being younger than kindergarten students, the requirement for any modernization or new build for students in kindergarten or TK would be a larger classroom and restroom. And we only have enough restrooms for, give or take, the classrooms that we have for kindergarten right now. There's a slight excess in the district, but not enough to run a full program. So I don't have the numbers in front of me. There were a few classrooms beyond the number of sections that we can bring to. So there's a combination of appropriate facilities and impacting that we come from facilities. We did not have TK in our measuring M. So we had to look at how we funded facilities as well. And are we funding that for TK that probably can't fall on measuring M? Is there something that we can fund for kindergartens? So there'd be a little bit of work there, looking at what the funding source would be as well, how you could do that without using general, general fund dollars.
And the status in Sacramento, any funding for basic aid districts?
We haven't had a, tell you one specific issue.
We continue to advocate and we, there currently right now is no funding in the governor's budget and doesn't look to be funding in the committee. So as of right now, it's not projected to be funded for students who attend basic aid districts. It is something we advocate for because it is in the budget, but it doesn't have a way to be distributed to students who attend basic aid districts. So we continue to advocate and as of right now, there is no, there is no, nothing on the horizon. It looks like it will be funded.
And I think you guys gave us this number before, but there was some sort of, there was a general guess as to how much it would cost?
We had about $4 million.
$4 million?
And annually, and that's not including facilities impact.
Thank you. Okay, we'll need a motion to approve the budget. I don't hear any questions. Your motion?
Uh, this one.
Thank you. Sarah, second?
All six.
Okay. All those in favor of adopting the 2022-23 proposed budget? If they say aye, aye, opposed, okay, the budget's passed. 10.2 is for consideration for approval of notice of exemption.
So 10.2 is a consideration of approval of the notice of exemption. This is related to the properties, Suite 103 at 11189, Sterling Valley Road. Potential purchase of this property would not increase any vehicle trips. It wouldn't increase the number of staff there. It wouldn't change the work. It would provide a better work environment for the staff members. So I would request for approval of a notice of exemption.
Any questions? Any questions? Our motion to adopt the notice of exemption? To adopt the notice of exemption? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. May those opposed? Then, the motion to approve the adopt the notice of exemptions passed. 10.3 is for consideration of potential approval of purchase and sale agreement for acquisition of real property identified as suite 103 located at 11189, Center Valley Road.
Kristen Helfer. 10.3, as shared, this is for property acquisition in unit 103, which I'll share about, about the current need and our request for approval for this purchase. Current need, the suite 103 is next door to suites 101 and 102, which are currently, units 101 and 102 are the DMSD warehouse and our maintenance operations and facilities department and technology department offices are in unit 102. To give a little bit of history, the departments were joined together in that space in 2019 when I was the executive director for capital programs and technology. I'm overseeing both departments and putting them together. At that time, technology had been at Delmar Hills Academy. Moving into the warehouse has proven to be a great move to have maintenance and technology together because there are a lot of, there's a lot of work that is done together between the two departments. So it is ideal to have them in space. However, moving a whole new department into 102 and looking at the, the space, it made it very tight. And so we've made do with that. However, we now have an opportunity to expand. And we have had this need since soon after we moved in. We have a need for appropriate work and office space for technology and maintenance staff. And we've had to push groups together. We actually have a couple of our employees who work out of what's been a closet. We've turned into a very small office space with a window on the door. We need workspace for technology department repairs. Our technology department needs some space where you can lay out devices and we can enroll devices. We can take our switches and things like that and be able to do some of the programming. At this point, we don't have that. We're having to try and find ways to use space in the warehouse. And the conference and meeting space. Any department needs the opportunity and time to be able to come together for collaboration and meetings. There isn't any space because we had to use the conference space that was previously there to house a number of our technology staff members. So when we look at, I was there in May, our maintenance warehouse has three days. This is the first day and the opening would be just to this end here. As we were ending the year, we had a huge number of desks that we were accessing that were here. Our middle bay had a number of carts that were being built. And then this bay was being used for some access things, technology. So I was there yesterday or the day before. No, so this is looking out there. And this is actually where we park our maintenance vehicles in the evening because they have ladders and other things and if you want to take them in, have them secure. We are building up promo carts. Our team's working really hard. We have an amazing tech department that's doing this. But this is our first bay. It's now filled with promo carts. And our second bay also filled with promo carts and our third bay with promo carts and iBets. So what happens is there, just illustrates the fact the warehouse is always in use and trying to expand, say, to have technology use a space. It can be used in periods of time. But then as we have furniture that comes in, this is going to get pushed out, we're going to receive that. So there's kind of an ongoing use of this warehouse space. In addition, the office space, this is one of our employee members. Really, there's just this desk and this was a closet that now is his space. It's next to another member of our team who is our network analyst that needs to be able to work on the switches that you can see on his desk and in this area. And then this is sort of the galley way that runs to it. And so our tech team is kind of used to putting things in all these spaces. They don't have a way to lay it out and work on the, the tools that we then serve all of our internet and is kind of back one of our districts. And our custodial mic, custodial manager, his office that joins what used to be a shower and now is storage space. So we're, we're just kind of bursting at the seams at this point. We had a unique opportunity. We're in a sort of a work condo where there are units and the neighboring one came up. So in this case where we have a need for expansion, we have people in the right place. We just don't have enough space. We have the unique opportunity for unit 103 where we have another almost 2,000 square feet. It has two offices in the back, so it will be tailor-made to move one of the departments into that area. This center space is actually a large space where we could certainly set up some of those cubicles and create workspaces in it. And then it has a good sized conference room that's right in the front that would allow us to have meetings with the departments. Or we could bring in vendors and we have vendors coming in. You're able to actually situate them there and, and suit that need. So it really hits on all of the needs we would have. And it's right next door to the current workspace for our technology department and our MLLA department. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I request approval of purchase of units 103.
Yeah, I was going to ask about, you know, after seeing the pictures, I don't need to ask about using the classroom space. Like, it's just, it just doesn't seem like that would match the, the needs.
There's also the downside of being on a school site when you're at tech or maintenance department. They get called off out at all hours. When we were on Delmar Hills, there were times where, you know, that parking lot gets backed up because from 2 o'clock to 15, you can't get in or out. And so there are just things that on a school site, we found to be somewhat problematic. I also think that it's really important now that we have them together, keep the two departments together. So it makes a bigger footprint and we do need the warehouse space for sure.
And purchasing this does not affect the general fund?
That's a great question. So purchase of this would come from Fund 40. As we just shared, Fund 40 has approximately 6.4 million dollars in it. It is earmarked for capital facilities. And as we shared previously, through overruns, cost overruns in North City West, we've, we've built up much of that fund. There isn't a minimum in that fund that we need to maintain. And so we'd be able to use that fund to purchase a space. And it also says it's an asset. So when you look at, we are purchasing property which is then an asset. And should down the road, the board, this board or future board decide that it should be a change meeting, it would be possible to sell that asset and, and move on to another option that so desire.
And the price that we're getting for it, is it, have you looked at comps?
We have looked at comps, the $925,000, there were multiple offers and offers in that range. We've looked at comps and comps for a unit of this size. And working with a broker and looking at some things are, are in this range as well. There are more buyers could potentially buy at this cost point than we can get into a two or three or four million dollar cost points. And so a smaller business owner, there's a little more demand at this size.
And certainly the value for us is the location.
Absolutely. And there's really no other option to keep this department together in this space other than the, the unit that's right next to it.
Kind of a perfect story.
Thanks for making that point because it, it seems like what's different from acquiring this space versus building, investing, building on one of our school sites is that we can always sell it. If we change our minds, it's an asset that we retain.
Yeah.
For it. So it gives us some flexibility to explore alternatives in the future. We wanted to, you know, move that to a school site or figure out some way to build on a school site. In the future, we would have alternative to get that impact.
We certainly would.
Any other questions or discussion?
I think you guys covered it all.
Thanks.
Yeah. I'd be happy to move forward and make the motion to approve this purchase.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
There's a favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Your motion.
Okay, 12.1 is for review preliminary items from July 2022, regular board meeting. Do you have any items? And 12.2 is adjourned and in closed session. The board will need a closed session in the following manner. So 12.1, evaluation of the employee, evaluation of performance of public employee. The board will now adjourn to closed session at 7:49 PM. Okay. 14.1, we can be in open session. We'll be convening open session at 8:39 PM. 14.2, report of action taken, closed session. The government board met closed session and no action was taken. 15.1 is adjourned to the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still move.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. That's opposed. The meeting is adjourned also at 8:39 PM. Good evening.